I also called legislators into special session in order to respond to the clarion call for police reform. Across the state, tens of thousands of Oregonians have taken to the streets to demand racial justice and police accountability. It isn't just big marches in Portland. It's people in small towns, suburbs, and rural areas also standing up to say, "Black Lives Matter." Let me be really clear. The crisis of racism and racial inequity in this country has only worsened since President Trump took office. This is a president who, on a daily basis, stokes the flames of hatred and division rather than building bridges of unity and healing. I called this legislature together because I don't want to hear the words,[57.32][57.35]"I can't breathe," uttered from the mouth of a single Oregonian, not from one more American. The entrenched racial inequities in our justice system are a long-term problem, and it will take more than three days of work in our state Capitol to set our state on a course toward justice and equity for all. That said, I'm really proud that lawmakers came together to take several important steps forward, including limiting the use of chokeholds and tear gas, setting up a statewide database for police disciplinary cases, and preventing an arbitrator from overturning the discipline of a police officer. It's worth noting that the proposal to have the Attorney General oversee review of use-of-force cases will be taken up by a task force. We need to get this done, but it must be done right. Even as we take these steps forward, our task to eradicate racism in this country remains monumental. Our intention is not just to talk, but to act. The work is not the end; it's truly the beginning. I want to recognize the People of Color Caucus of the legislature for their leadership in pushing us to be bolder and move faster on the road to justice. And in particular, I want to thank Representative Bynum and Senator Frederick for their courage, their tenacity, and their dedication. These last few days have been an opportunity for lawmakers to set aside partisan differences and to take action for the people of our state, and they have done so. I thank lawmakers for their time and for their dedication. In the coming weeks, we will need to take further action on our state's finances. And as I've said before, I anticipate calling the legislature into a second special session to rebalance our state budget. I already outlined roughly $150 million in cuts to trim budget expenses for this biennium. Luckily, we're better prepared for this economic downturn than many others in my lifetime with state reserves and the Rainy Day Fund currently in place. We are holding off for the next special session for a few weeks to give Congress time to take action. And I hope, I plead, that congressional legislators will hear the call from states across the country and step in with additional federal support. In the meantime, there are some additional investments that we must make with the existing federal dollars. Next week, I'll be sharing a plan with the Oregon Legislature to use coronavirus relief fund dollars to support our Black communities for investments in health equity and to provide relief for working people who need to take time off if they are sick from COVID-19. It's incredibly important that we get dollars to the communities most impacted by the pandemic and that we help working people when they need to stay home from work due to the disease. Finally, I want to reiterate how crucial it is for students to have a chance to make up for lost time in the classroom. The Department of Education is working with school boards, educators, and parents to plan for the fall. And I'm not willing to see our school districts laying teachers off just as schools are preparing to reopen. As we look toward budget adjustments, I remain committed to maintaining a $9 billion state school fund budget for our K through 12 schools. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
And first question will be from Claire Whitcomb with State Journal. Go ahead, Claire.
Hi, Governor. Thank you for taking the time. I wanted to ask about whether you have any sense of how large a federal aid package could be for Oregon. What are you expecting?
I don't at this time. Again, it's my hope and plea that our congressional delegation will continue to play a leadership role and get resources to Oregon as quickly as possible and as much as possible.
You don't even have, like, a ballpark figure or...
Look, I know that our congressional delegation understands the magnitude of the deficit we are facing both for this biennium and for next biennium, which is extremely challenging. Obviously, it would be my hope that they would provide enough federal dollars to fill that entire hole. I am realistic enough to know that that's not likely going to be the case. I'm just hoping that as many resources they can get to the great state of Oregon will be extremely grateful for every single dollar.
Thanks, Claire. And just a reminder, folks, please press zero to get into the question queue. We'll go next to Gary Warner with EO Media. Go ahead, Gary.
Good morning, Governor. Good afternoon, actually. Can you give us a little bit more of a specific idea of when you would have the second special session? How long do you wait for Congress to act? I think the House goes out at the end of the month and the Senate's around for the week after that.
So, Gary, my understanding is that the Senate goes out mid-July. I think we'll have a very clear sense at that point whether there is going to be additional funding for the states, the local jurisdictions, and the tribes. If we don't see action by the end of July, then I will be expecting to call the legislature in very quickly to look at budget reductions and plan for the next biennium. Again, we know that states are struggling in terms of balancing their budgets because of the economic suppression caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. And we know that states are really instrumental in terms of providing key services to Oregonians and Americans, from food stamps to making sure that we have a robust public health system to ensuring that our communities are safe. So, I just want to say, really appreciate the leadership of our federal delegation to go fight for Oregon. But it's not just the state. It's our local jurisdictions that are struggling. And obviously, our nine federally recognized tribes need additional federal help as well.
So, you're not looking at a special session then prior to August 1st?
I think it is my hope that we would come in end of July, early August. That would be the plan at this point in time.
I have other things for another couple to go.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary. And just a reminder, folks, please press zero to enter the question queue. If you're having trouble with that, you can also email written questions to Nikki Fisher. But go ahead and press zero first and see if that works. We'll go next to Ben Botkin with the Love Report. Go ahead, Ben.
Hi, Governor. I was hoping you could maybe just elaborate a little bit on the $150 million in cuts you've identified and how that fits in with your overall planning for what the state would do and the overall picture of that versus the potential federal relief.
Thanks, Ben. I appreciate the question. So, as households across the state are tightening their belts, so too must we at the state level, and that's exactly what we're moving forward on. The $150 million in cuts that we've identified, we did so in partnership and agreement with the Oregon Legislature. So, there is support from the legislative branch to making these cuts. In addition, and Oregonians probably will see this, that we are agencies, certain agencies are doing layoffs and cutting back. We're continuing to hold vacancies open. And frankly, we're doing everything we can to squeeze every single bit of toothpaste out of the tube to address the short-term budget crisis as we begin to plan for the next biennium budget cycle as well.
Great. Thanks, Ben. We'll go next to Mira Powell with OPB. Go ahead, Mira.
Hi, Governor. I'm wondering, do you support the idea of offering liability protection for businesses, schools, and other places to protect them from COVID-19-related lawsuits?
Look, there are two things very important to me. Number one, folks who are injured under certain circumstances should be able to seek redress and hold those who created the injury accountable. Secondly, that our businesses across the state need a level of certainty. I know that the House has convened a task force to wrestle with these issues, and I look forward to seeing the product of that task force. But in terms of our schools and our local jurisdictions across the state, my team is working with folks at the Department of Consumer and Business Services to make sure that they have the certainty and the stability that they need to continue to operate and look forward to coming with some proposals to the table in the next few weeks.
Thanks, Mira. Next up, we have Hillary Baroud from the Oregonian. Go ahead, Hillary. Hillary, can you hear us? All right, we'll come back to Hillary. Next up, we've got Les Zeitz with the Mount Her Enterprise. Go ahead, Les.
Good afternoon, Governor. I want to go back to your commitment on the $9 billion school funding. Is your message clear to school districts who are working right now to reopen that they should count on getting the money they expected before COVID hit?
Yes, that's my message. It is my expectation that we will deliver at the $9 billion state school fund level.
Okay. And if I may ask, if I could switch to COVID for a moment, Governor?
Of course, Les. Go ahead.
Well, in recent days, we've seen, you know, rather alarming numbers across the state of not only new cases but increasing positive test rates. In May, the Oregon Health Authority outlined what they called "stop signs" to stopwatch and redirect. At this point, Governor, are you considering any action to tighten restrictions across the state besides what you've got in place already?
Thank you, Les, for the question. So, the numbers that we are seeing regarding the increased infection rates in Oregon are alarming. Just to put it in perspective, our infection rate is substantially lower than a number of states across the country, but they are extremely alarming. And frankly, all options are on the table. I would hope to avoid a wholesale shutdown in the economy. That's not my preferred approach, but Oregonians must take this seriously. Les, you know that last week I announced a mask mandate for seven Oregon counties in order to reduce the spread of the disease. And Clatsop County has asked to be added to the list on July 1st, and we will do that. The disease spreads by droplets from your nose and mouth, droplets that come from breathing. By covering your face, I'll show my handy-dandy state-of-Oregon face covering with our good friend and Douglas fir trees on back. But by recovering your face up, you reduce the droplets that come from your mouth and spread around you to the others around you. And the science is very, very clear on face coverings. So, I'm taking this seriously. The public needs to take this very seriously. And so today, Les, I am announcing new guidelines from Oregon OSHA for how businesses should be enforcing this mask mandate and their rights to turn away customers who refuse to comply with this public health order. OSHA is also stepping up business enforcement and outreach to ensure that they are complying with this requirement. Here's the bottom line. Each one of us can make a difference. Each and every Oregonian can have an impact on whether their favorite coffee shop, their favorite microbrew, their favorite boutique stays open by wearing your face coverings when you're out in public, by covering your cough with your elbow when you sneeze, and, of course, making sure that you wash your hands. Your actions truly do matter. We are all in this together.
If I may, Governor Paul, on that just a bit, I mean, you've acknowledged that the infection rate is alarming. You've mandated masks in seven counties. What holds you back from mandating masks across the state, given what's happening?
Great question. Two things. Number one, population density and infection rates. And again, all options on the table. If those change substantially, we will, looking at all the tools that we have in our toolbox. The, okay, I was just gonna say, the metric I'm watching very, very closely is our hospital bed capacity and our healthcare worker capacity. And that's something we're watching very closely to make sure that we have adequate capacity across the state and the region.
Thanks, Les. We'll go back to Hillary Baroud. Hillary, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Okay, great. Well, Governor, thanks for talking with us today. We didn't really hear from you during the session. The Senate President told reporters yesterday that you were not involved in the session. So, is that by design?
Well, I would say that's not really accurate, that we were not involved. I, for example, on one particular bill, reached out to a member of the Senate to work with the member, make sure that they got their concerns addressed, and made sure that we made changes to the bill that would address the concerns that were there. My team was here in the building, and I was here in the building on Friday afternoon, watching, I was certainly watching hearings from my computer screen at Mahonia in Salem. But we were closely engaged. We set the list, as you might recall, and made a decision on what bills would move forward and what would not. I have to say, this was quite an unusual special session, and the legislature, your Oregon legislature shined for the people of Oregon.
Can you be more specific about, well, what was the bill? That you were talking?
I worked to make sure that legislators' concerns were addressed on residential and foreclosure moratorium legislation.
Okay, and then just looking ahead to the next special session, you have not, it doesn't seem like you have thought any delays in public employee raises. That's something that has gone on in Washington to the north. It's happening in some local governments in Oregon and, of course, in the private sector. That's going on a lot. So, at what point would you look to do that? You know, even as you're talking about wanting money from the feds, you haven't tempted that.
So, we are looking at all the tools that we have in our toolbox to tighten the belts of state government. Hillary, as you know, right now in this moment in time, state government is providing key services to Oregonians that are struggling to make ends meet. Our Housing and Community Services Department is working really, really hard to get coronavirus relief dollars out to community action agencies across the state. Obviously, the Department of Human Services is working to make sure that we're getting families' food stamps and assistance that they might need. And Department of Human Services is partnering very closely with the Oregon Health Authority to make sure that our thousands of residents in our long-term assisted care facilities are safe from this global pandemic. In terms of the budget, the good news is for Oregon is that we are better prepared than we have been in decades, and that's a good sign. And if you look in comparison to other states, because of the investments we've made in our Rainy Day Fund and our Education Stability Fund, we're in better shape. That being said, we are continuing to look for ways to tighten our belts in state government. And obviously, everything is on the table as we move into tackling the budget.
Thanks, Hillary.
Well, and just one more question. Well, I just wanted to circle back because the Governor is talking about the enforcement of services, and that is part of the equation here on pay increases versus having to lay off personnel at some point when you're talking about cuts.
Well, Hillary, as you know, a number of agencies have already made layoffs and reductions, including Oregon Parks, the OWEB Agency, and Lottery have all made reductions. Other agencies are taking the steps that I have asked, including freezing new programs and not hiring into vacancies. But we are looking at all the statutory tools and all the tools that we have in our toolbox to reduce the cost of state government.
Thanks, Hillary. And we're gonna move on so that we can get in a few more questions. Rachel Monahan asks with the L.A. News. Governor, what's the threshold of cases or hospitalizations that will cause you to shut down bars and other businesses again?
Look, I am asking Oregonians to take this very, very seriously. The increase in cases is alarming, and I would hope that folks would take individual responsibility. We have done a really good job so far. Across the state, we've made tremendous sacrifices to reduce the number of COVID-19 cases and to literally save lives. We have to keep that up. Stay home if you are sick. Wear a face covering if you are out in public. Please keep your recreation local. And as we head into the Fourth of July holiday season, I want to encourage and cajole Oregonians to keep it local. I know many of you were planning your typical backyard barbecue bash. Please, keep it to members of your own household. We know that following the Memorial Day weekend that we saw a spike in cases. If we continue on this path, we will need to start buttoning down the economy. I don't want to do that. That's not my preferred approach. I want us all to participate. I want us all to take responsibilities for our actions, to be safe, to be kind, to be thoughtful of your neighbors and your community members and all Oregonians.
And next, we'll go to Peter Wong with the Portland Tribune. Go ahead, Peter.
Okay. Governor, you've already stayed at your position on the commercial activity tax, and I believe the legislature made some technical changes in a bill. Do you anticipate that the transfer of some of the revenues collected will proceed as scheduled to the schools under the Student Success Fund and the earmarked programs for which districts have developed programs?
Yes, yes, I do, Peter. And I think it's fair to say that the Student Success Act was a remarkable feat, that after decades of working to bring businesses, educators, teachers, and parents together to make a significant investment in our education system, we were able to do that. I'm really grateful for that. Given what our kids have suffered across the state in terms of losing days and weeks out of their school year, I think it's critically important that we move forward on this investment in our children's education and that we not rip the rug out from underneath them. And so, I'm pleased we're moving forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Just a reminder, folks, go ahead and press zero to get into the question queue. This next question comes from John Hendricks with KPTV. Governor, he asks, "How much does the state have in federal COVID-19 funds available now that will be part of a plan that should be released next week? Where does Oregon stand when it comes to any deficit the state is facing? Is the deficit getting worse or better?"
Sure, Charles, I'm going to need those questions again. But as far as I know, the deficit has not changed. We will be getting an updated forecast in the coming weeks. Secondly, what was the second question?
It was about the COVID-19 funds for the plan next week.
My plan for the remaining COVID dollars is to spend $62 million for the CARES Black Relief Fund, $45 million for the Oregon Health Authority Equity Plan, and $30 million to provide sick leave for struggling workers across the state that have contracted COVID-19. Obviously, the legislature gets to weigh in on that, but I think we have a solid proposal, and I look forward to working with the legislature to distribute those funds in the manner I'm proposing.
Thanks, John. The next question is from Angelina Dixon with KVAL. Go ahead, Angelina.
Hi, Governor. My question is, can we elaborate on the items under police reform? And when can we expect this to take effect?
Sure. So, in terms of police accountability, the legislature took up a number of measures, including legislation that limits the use of chokeholds and tear gas. They set up a statewide database for police disciplinary cases and finally passed legislation to prevent an arbitrator from overturning the discipline of a police officer. They are also working on a task force to take a look at the use-of-force language. This language is extremely complex. I believe it has not been substantially modified since Attorney General Hardy Myers was the Attorney General. And so, they'll be working on that over the interim for the '21 legislative session. What I think is really important is that the People of Color Caucus took a strong leadership role here. I took my cues and guidance from them. We were able to make some significant strides toward increasing police accountability in this state. There is absolutely a lot more work to be done. And I look forward to partnering with the People of Color Caucus, with legislators, and extensive community-based organizations to continue to eradicate racism in our policing systems in Oregon and in our criminal justice system in Oregon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angelina. Looks like we have one more question in the question queue right now. So, we'll go to Dick Hughes. Go ahead, Dick.
Thank you. Governor, you mentioned the money that you wanted to be provided to marginalized communities and people of color, particularly Black Oregonians. What do you see that money accomplishing? And how would it be used? Thank you.
Great question, Dick. I think it's critically important that we support the communities most impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And that includes our Black and African-American communities, our Latinx community, which has the highest percentage rate. We have 35% of COVID-19 cases are in the Latinx community, our Pacific Islander population, which also frankly has an extremely high rate of COVID-19 infection, as well as our Native American populations. The Oregon Health Authority Equity Action Plan will go in partnership. The Health Authority will be co-creating these plans The Health Authority will be co-creating these plans with these communities to make sure that we are addressing COVID-19 response, but also frankly, being proactive around what is likely to be the next outbreak. In terms of the CARES Black Relief Fund, I see this primarily going to the number of Black and African-American businesses across the state that have really struggled during the pandemic. We know that the PPP, the Paycheck Protection Plan, did not go to our businesses owned by people of color, and I think it sends a really strong message that Oregon, that we value these businesses, that they're an important part of our economy, an important part of our community, and an important part of our culture, and we want to make sure that these businesses survive through this tremendously challenging economic time.
All right. Thanks, Dick. We just got one more question here in writing. Gary Warner asks, "Are we still on track for A+ class, K-12 this fall, or for universities or colleges?"
Yes, we're still on track. But again, it's up to all of us. Each one of us can make a difference during this pandemic by making sure you wear a face covering, by avoiding doing that Fourth of July backyard barbecue bash with the 100 of your closest friends. Please keep it to your household members. Your actions really do matter, whether we can keep open your local microbrew or your favorite bicycle store. And obviously, top priority is to make sure that we can keep our schools and our universities open so that our children across the state, our young people across the state, can get the education that they need to achieve their full potential. And that ought to be a priority for all of us. It's a priority for me. I hope Oregonians share in that and making that a priority.